For the farm community, there's equity at stake for large landowners, whether it be just a private kind of farm where people have a horse or two and their wooded land, a pond where they can fish, whatever it is, or other land that might be something that they could use for children's education, for their retirement, for any use that they see fit under the law. And I would say in this world today, it's hard enough to navigate through all the obstacles that are put in front of us without having hurdles put before us by our own representatives, that you should listen to the people, that you should understand what the people are saying to you. So again, I ask each of you, what do you have at stake in this? And what will you do for the citizens and what they're telling you they want? Thank you.
Mike Kleiner, 45, Springfield Drive, Marth East. Permission, I'd like to talk a little bit about SB 236. Having attended yesterday's man's animated, it's not a specific house, but it's not a specific 236. I have to say, my scruff is we look at the commission's resolution to submit the initial tier map and back this up as much as possible to the county's comprehensive plan. This represents the minimum possible compliance of SB 236 that is in compliance and aligned for those of us who want to see our property rights protected. During yesterday's meeting, the question was also asked, is this constitutional? I think that's a good question. According to the Fifth Amendment, nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation. My question is, what is the public use of just rights of state? So who does the landlord appeal for just compensation? And just how would the state return a just compensation? I don't think we have that. Perhaps the use to for justice could be, and listening to this case, there's successfully prosecuted cases like this, I believe pro bono as well. I hope the rural counties will join with us in class action if necessary. I heard the county did an answer to the question, is this constitutional? Follow up program. Thank you.
Wayne Stafford, 2677 Ball Road, Upton, Maryland. Also president of Cecil County Farm Bureau. And I wanted to take this opportunity to thank all the farmers that showed up, took their time to bring tractors. And I also want to thank the Upton Police Department, Sheriff's Department, they showed up where we congregated, they make sure we were able to come down without an issue. We weren't, we were just trying to make a statement, we were not trying to cause any problems with anybody, so far so good. So I want to thank all those that have showed up for this. And for the benefit of the commissioners, I'd like to give a little history on tiers. This came about, well, the idea of tiers didn't come out until the last minute, but this plan in Maryland, there was a task force formed with the state of Maryland, and the president of Maryland Farm Bureau was put on this task force, they met through the summer and the fall last year, and it was the very last meeting that the idea of tier maps came out. And there was no language on these maps until time for the general assembly. Like Valerie stated, it was the most undertaking in over 100 years of our planning and zoning in the state, and you had 26 days to respond to before the general assembly came on. And that on this, that we have opposed tier mapping from the start, of taking, you know, it all reflects into private property rights, and it flies in the face of land preservation. I'm not going to speak too much on that because somebody else is here that knows more about that than I am, but I did want to mention that in the state of Maryland, we have 279,974 acres preserved. That's in the mouth program alone, that's not all the other preservation rights programs together. And we also have a long list of people in this county that are waiting for that. I'm one of the lucky ones, I mean, my farm is preserved, I've been paid for it, and I don't think anybody has the right to take that out. And I know that the Department of Planning has done a little strong army, and they've been known for that, and it has little or no effect on our certification and large effect on property values and equity. And all I ask the commissioners is that we do the minimum required to follow state law, which we can follow with our comprehensive plan. We have a good plan, you know, it was a lot of give and take, and I know if we go above and beyond that, it's going to be hard pressed to find 40 some people to give two years of their life up to volunteer to renew another one. And just some of, this whole thing is a snowball effect, and that's why farmers are so upset. I mean, we have the nutrient management regs, we as agriculture, we have a TMDL goal, and as of a certain date, agriculture was 124% of that goal. So what do we have to look forward to? Another whole host of regulations coming down the pipe. You know, I would tell you this just to reiterate our frustration and loss of anything that we, you know, we've worked for. To give you an idea, that this proposed fencing setbacks, streams and edges, that's going to take out 50,000 acres in the state of Maryland out of production, just that bites up. And then you have to maintain that, control it, you know, there just seems to be no end. Nutrient management has been a, farmers have been following that since the 80s when it was a voluntary program. New technologies come out, testing, minor testing, how to apply it, calibration of spreaders. So we've been up against the gun for this for a long time, and to see, you know, a whitewash of the map, where, you know, we just don't want to stand for it. And, you know, I will say to you, you know, if we, you know, the commissioners want to stand up to the state, we'll stand with you. You do not more than you have to because you're not going to get it back. I know that's been requested to some, you know, do it now, revisit it later, and that won't happen. So do the minimum. I know we have to do some, and we all have to give a little bit, but I say do the minimum that the state requires, and we'll back you up on that. Is that all right? Thank you.
Don Moore. Don Moore, 2677 Telegraph Road Northeast. Good afternoon. I was born and raised and still reside on a family farm in northern Cecil County. In addition to that, I sit on the board of directors of the Maryland Ag Land Preservation Foundation, which I'll refer to as MAF. I heard yesterday that since Cecil County is in the process of their MAF recertification, the county must submit the most restrictive version of the map to the state where the county's recertification is in jeopardy. For the record, that statement falls. The recertification is complete and valid until 2015. The principles of what is happening here is not what MAF stands for. We're a voluntary program where landowners can choose to extinguish development rights in exchange for some sort of compensation. Quite simply, it works. To date, like Wayne said, over a quarter of a million acres in Maryland are enrolled in the NIS with numerous other farmers waiting on a waiting list. If you want land preserved, impress upon your legislators to fund the program, and also look around the county and find funds within the county to match our state funds, like other counties are doing. Stealing farmers' property rights are not the answer. It devalues farmland and erodes equity. This hinders a farmer's ability to borrow money for operating loans and equipment purchases. Do any of you realize how much money it takes to plant a crop of corn or a crop of soybeans in this day and age, or what the risk is that's involved in that? How much money do you spend putting gas in your car? Well, imagine fueling a tractor or a combine that likely holds in excess of 100 gallons of fuel, you run it for 10 or 12 hours and then do it all over again. Farmers are facing increased pressure from rising input costs, nutrient management regulations, and TMDLs. This is not the time to rob equity out of their land. If you want to preserve ag land and open space, start by preserving the farmer, and the land will take care of itself.
Nancy Valentine. Nancy Valentine, 135 Pine Cone Drive, Marth East, Maryland. And I didn't, I came over to hear about SB 236, but there are a couple of points I want to make about something you're voting on this afternoon. And that's the revised TDR ordinance and amendments to zoning ordinance that support the transfer of development rights. With what we're hearing today, this is probably going to become something that is relevant to our realizing the comprehensive plan. It allows a person with land and development rights to sell those to the county or to an individual developer to put, for the developer to get more density in the growth area. This is a good thing for us, if there couldn't be a better time for us to have this tool available. So I support your votes in favor of the transfer of development rights. Thank you.
Bill Crigger. My name's Bill Crigger. I live in Rising Sun, Maryland, on Wilson Road, my address is 659. I'm a farmer. All my blood, sweat, and youth is in that farm. I don't like people taking my rights away. And you offer nothing in return for what I've worked a lifetime for. It's not right. The other folks smarter than me have said it all. If you're paying attention, listen to them. That's all I've got to say.
Charlotte Egging. Good afternoon. My name is Charlotte Egging. I live at 1100 Calp Road, Rising Sun, Maryland. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I guess I'm the face of the farmer, the wannabe farmer, for all her life. I've always wanted to own a horse. I've done, my children were raised as Girl Scouts, and then they went to Pony Club, and every, I'm also 4H, so every opportunity that I've given my children to be environmentalists and to value the land and, you know, just all of that has helped. I've had people in my path this whole journey, this entire journey, and finally in 2007, I was able to purchase a small, five acre property, you know, thanks to the other farmers that have helped me, the Wilsons and the Reynolds. They've helped me all along. They've, they've let me lease their land for horses. Poppy Sterns, she bought my first horse from her. So all of these people that have helped me along the way, Joanne Crigger, the Moores, there's just an enormous amount of people, but they all reside in Cecil County, all of them. Even Pam Howard helped me when I was taking lessons, horseback riding lessons, when I rode with her. So there's been so many people in my path for this opportunity to own land in Cecil County. And our family, I mean, even my husband, it's just unbelievable. But I depend on the larger, on the larger farms to feed my two horses. I mean, one's a mule and one's an off-the-track Arabian. You know, how, how better? And I need, I need the farmers, the local farmers to feed my family, to feed, to feed my horses with the hay, for bedding, for straw. It's just, and I just cannot believe that the rights are being taken away, not only from me, but from my friends, from the county, all up and down the county. And yes, there are land that we do have preserved, and yes, you may look at me and go, oh yeah, that she really helps out. I do. I volunteered at Fair Hill. I've been doing that since 2005. And before that, we were on the Trash Patrol, you know, when they have Fair Hill International. And the horse industry needs to have little, you know, little people like me to own property in Cecil County, to generate that income, to keep buying local products. Where else in this good United States that at the last minute, we could go down 272 and pick up a dozen years of corn, that we know that that corn was just picked that morning? So please, please, just take away all this tier. Can we just go back to our property rights when we purchased land in Cecil County? And use, use today to go home and really think about what's being said. There are so many people that know so much more about government and about all the facts. But I plead, plead, do not take the property rights away because there may be people just like me that will never have the opportunity that I had. Thank you.
David McCreary. David McCreary, 1465 Telegraph Road, McCreary Farms, OLC. I just am appalled that the government again is trying to take more of our rights away. I didn't build that farm, my father did, and he would like to have control of the rights of that farm, and I would too someday. Thank you.
Holly Willis. Good afternoon. My name is Holly Willis. I live at 65 Wade Lane Northeast. I'm a farmer. I might not look like one, but I'm a farmer. I've lived on a farm most of my life. My husband's a farmer. We finally were able to get a farm big enough to not totally support us, but at least give us something that we feel we could pass on to our family, to our children and our grandchildren. How many of you have taken the time to visit a farm family in Tier Four that you've put in Tier Four on your map to find out how it affects them? Have any of you, believe me, it affects us. You've put us in a category along with state land, county land, forestry, park, and land that's been preserved and in conservation programs. We're not in that. We're not a public land. So I think you need to rethink your ideas of what Tier Four should be and do the minimum. Don't hurt us anymore. Thank you.
Donna Trivaletti.
Hello. My name's Donna Trivaletti, 695 Calora Road, Calora, Maryland. And basically, I agree with everything the other speakers have said, and I just feel that this act is unconstitutional.
Raymond Borland.
Raymond Borland, 695 Calora Road, Calora, Maryland. Regulations and any law that takes property without compensation is unconstitutional. People have elected public officials, yet public officials get paid 125% of the salary of people in the private sector, and they also have pensions and healthcare that are 125% larger than the private sector. Okay, I think this is a terrible abuse. Okay, we have taxes that are increasing all the time, regulations that are imposed on us because a bureaucrat doesn't think the government has to pay for it, or doesn't have the tax money to pay for compensation for confiscation of land or rights. I support everybody that spoke here today, I think this should stop. Thank you.
Vincent Simmons.
My name's Vincent Sammons, I reside at 25 Beaver Court in Rising Sun. I'm here to talk about SB 236. It's apparent everyone here has some type of special interest that you're, that you're going for here. A special interest is their individual property rights. That's a special interest for all of, you know, trying to get to point across everyone here. And there's been six different maps and six different, you know, different versions of those maps, that some were public and some aren't made public. The one apparently is agreed on by the majority was Map Four. And I'm not sure why the other ones weren't given better consideration to the public other than the maps that were forced upon us to look at. But there's other maps in this form that we need to look at, and they're not currently being looked at. And I think we should have a realistic map based on the Planning and Zoning Commission from yesterday. They said they want the most restrictive map they can get in order to have the state take what they want. Okay? And that's coming from a commission that we've all approached upon, and they're all professionals. Now, these, these folks here are elected officials, and they're specific to what our will is. The Planning Commission has their special job, which is to plan the county. I don't think it's fair for commissioners to make these decisions without getting the Planning and Zoning Commission involved to find out what they think about the map to be. And I think we should start over on the map and let the Planning and Zoning submit that map that they feel is the correct map for us to look at, not the ones the commissioners have voted on. I say, thank you.
Bob Miller.
Hi, I'm Bob Miller, 41 Grove Boulevard, North East Maryland. I'm a fifth generation farmer, I own a farm. My family worked hard for that farm. My dad and uncle were forced, had a foresight to put ours in preservation in the 80s. They got compensated for that, had a huge discount to the taxpayers, but they were very happy with it, and it was voluntary. In 2008, I was able to buy the farm from them. I could not have done that if it had not been preserved. There's no way I could have competed with the developers. I have a huge mortgage as it is now. I think you need to make sure you do the least restrictive maps that you have to do. I think you need to stand up and be courageous, don't back down to the government. I also, as with Don Moore, I'm a former member of the former trustee of Maryland Ag Land Preservation Foundation, I was the vice chair of that back in the 90s. I fought hard back then, I bucked the system. There was one time that Governor Glenn Danning wanted to put a music festival on down Prince George's County. I was the only member to vote against that. Didn't really make any difference, but I stood up, and I believe you all need to stand up also and do what you feel is right. Thank you.
Rick Mason.
Hi, my name's Rick Mason, 64 Sheldon Lane, Rising Sun, Maryland. And I'm here today in support of my fellow farmers and the possible loss of their equity in their farms to this tier map system. My particular case, our farm is preserved and hopefully will be passed on to the family, but I think this will be a hardship for many farmers here, and they've done well with neighbors, and I just hate to see them have to tackle a problem like this without, you know, being able to be compensated for what is lost. So that's why I'm here today, and thank you very much.
Ben Haynes.
Ben Haynes, 810 Telegraph Road, Rising Sun, Maryland. Everything's been a lot more complicated than I thought it was going to be, and I agree with, that you need to look in our behalf for our assets that are going to be stripped. So it's about all I can add. I can't add anything to what other people already said. Thank you.
Bill Simmons.
My name's Bill Simmons, 241 Shady Road, Northeast Maryland. I'd just like to say, I'm not a farmer, but from what I've been hearing, this is not so much a health issue as it is a control issue. And the more things that you do to pass regulations to control a person's life, the more you're pushing away America's land and its free. I know how politics work, and it's my feeling that whether you vote for it or against it, you're all in favor of it, and you're all guilty of it. I would ask that you take a sincere effort to find the cause of the problem, and not just tax people. That's all government seems to do anymore, is taxes for every problem, instead of finding ways to save money. You could start by setting the example. Reduce your amount that you're paying, your amount that you're getting benefits. You're the leaders, then lead. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the action items this afternoon, Mr. Wine.
Mr. President, members of the board, there's two appointments to consider this afternoon. The first is with the local management board, being recommended that Tom Laughlin be reappointed for a one-year term.
Okay, members of the board, we'll entertain a motion to reappoint Tom Laughlin for a one-year extension of the local management board. Will be the motion for approval?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Motion, hear it announced.
With respect to the local development council, it's being recommended that Russ Millam be a new appointment for a four-year term, goes to fire August 21st, 2016.
Okay, with that, members of the board, we'll entertain a motion for Russ Millam for a three-year term for the local development council. Motion for approval? Second, is there any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. President, commissioners, order about December 21st, 2011, the Cecil County sold all the, substantially all the assets of the water fund to Otisian Water Company. After closing off all the costs of that fund, paying all the obligations of the fund, there's $2,248,319 remaining. It is my recommendation that that fund be closed, and the fund balance that's remaining be transferred to the waste water fund.
Thank you, sir. Members of the board, you heard Mr. Feely read the background of the resolution for the closure of the water fund, transfer fund balance to waste water fund. Your recommendation will obtain a motion.
I have a question first. Treasury Feely, it was brought up by his citizen today about the, was there any... Treasurer Fielding, it was brought up by his citizen today about the, was there any money advanced to the waste water fund from the general fund that wasn't reimbursed?
No, there was money advanced, but that's been reimbursed. That was part of the obligation of the fund.
Okay. And we had discussions before that the majority, at least 70% or more of the water customers also were sewer customers.
That's correct.
So, it wouldn't be unreasonable to say that the money paid in by the water customers would also be, most of the sewer customers, that would be helping them offset future costs of sewer service.
That's correct.
Okay, so we'll entertain a motion on the resolution for acceptance, recommendation of Treasurer Fielding to transfer, closure of water fund, transfer of fund balance to waste water fund.
Second.
Motion for approval? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries now. Thank you. Director Sunstrom.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, the next item on your agenda this afternoon concerns adding new language to the code of Cecil County, specifically Chapter 8 through 82. This language would create the ability of the county to purchase and sell development rights, as well as create a bank to all those rights after a purchase and prior to the sale. This item was before the Planning Commission, and it was also before you at your July meeting. Planning Commission forwarded a recommendation to you on approval, and it will move your actions this afternoon.
Okay, thank you, sir. Members of the board, will entertain a motion for ordinance 2012-04, amendment to the code of Cecil County, Chapter 282, transfer of development rights. Would that, would we entertain a motion on that action? We have a motion for approval? Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion?
As I had shared with you earlier, President Borland, I see the value in an excellent TDR ordinance, and I would like us to wait to adopt this until after we've had a chance to finalize the TDR map. I think there's going to be a lot of changes to that map, and I would like to wait till after that map is done, so that we can appropriately handle our TDR program.
Mr. President, I also agree that, I believe that the tier maps will have significant impact on preservation in Cecil County. I also believe that we should sit down and do our priority preservation map. And I also suggest that there's no doubt that there's certain improvements in this proposed ordinance dealing with TDRs, including the creation of a bank that could facilitate the transfer of development rights, even though I'm not a big fan of county government buying those TDRs when it hasn't been a proven entity as far as being a workable solution yet. I'd like to see, I'd like to postpone this also until we have more time to analyze the results of the tier maps.
Okay, well, I'll speak to that. Any property in NAR, regardless, it would either be Tier Three or Tier Four, even though we haven't settled on the map, in the SAR, anything would be Tier Three or Tier Four, it's still SAR. They are ascending densities. Descending density in the NAR is one unit per five acres. Those densities were grandfathered with each parcel of land in the SAR. The grandfather density for sending was one unit per three acres. With regard to the tier mapping and the proposal, regardless of whichever tier you fall in, three or four, you still qualify for land preservation, either through the state programs or the TDR. The guidance document from state planning with regard to this particular issue says it has no effect on any TDR ordinance that counties have. Worked a lot with this with Farm Bureau, Ag Advisory, and Ag Preservation Board. It's been vetted through those folks that would be the centers of the density. And in my opinion, I don't see anything wrong with adopting this piece, because at the end of the day, regardless of how the maps work out, NAR and SAR still want to be Tier Three or Tier Four, regardless of where they fall. So, we have a first and a second. All vote, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries to me, too. Thank you.
The next two items on your agenda concern transfer of development rights, however they affect the county's zoning ordinance rather than the code of Cecil County. Article 11, Part 5, Section 246, and Article 11, Part, I'm sorry, Article 2, Part 1, Section 12, will have new language added to both. Article 1, Article 2, Part 1, Section 12 will have a definition of transfer of development rights added, so that it's clear what a transfer of development right is. And Section 246 will have new language inserted, which will lower the threshold for semi-commercial eligibility in the northern agricultural residential zone. Both of these amendments have also been through the Planning Commission to forward a recommendation of approval to you, and they were at your meeting on July 17th in public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Members of the board, with regard to ordinance 2012-05, amendment, is there any ordinance that specifies specific language and allows descending density in the, or excuse me, descending parcel in the NAR from 50 acres to 25 acres? Would we entertain a motion on that ordinance? Okay, we have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries now. Thank you. Director Sunstrom.
Excuse me, the next item on your agenda concerns the rezoning request for 560 Blue Ball Road to rezone 8.6 and 0.17 acres from Urbanized Residential to Business General. This item was before the Planning Commission, and has forwarded a recommendation of approval to you based on a change in the character of neighborhood. Stat's recommendation was for disapproval, as there was no, Stat felt there was no demonstrated change in the character of neighborhood, and no demonstrated mistake in the 2011 comprehensive zoning. This was also before you in a public hearing, and it is now for you for an action item this afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions, Director Sunstrom, before I call for a motion?
We'll entertain a motion for approval or disapproval on application 2012-03, 560 Blue Ball Road, request to rezone 8.6 and 0.17 acres from Urbanized Residential to Business General.
I can understand why he made the argument to have a semi-commercial, because of the area seemed to have changed its character, but there were no rezonings in the area. The uses have accelerated, showing just that they're a lot more busier than they were before. But if we were to approve this, this is going to touch off a change of character and would have a ripple effect of possibly more rezonings in the area. So, you know, by law, it says there has to have been a mistake made in the comprehensive rezoning or a significant change of character, and I don't think he meant the burden of that. And I'm going to go with Stat's recommendation that we disapprove.
Yes. So, you're making that formal motion, disapproval. Okay, we have a motion to disapprove. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, one of the things that occurred to me as I was talking to this, and I agree, it doesn't mean the burden improved for a certain change. However, there's an inherent problem in that the, it seemed like the only barrier for him to continue on with what he was doing was that his structure be connected to the house. Is that, okay, remembering that discussion probably took place over a month ago. And Eric, I guess my question for you is, how do we correct that part of it? In terms of, I don't know, maybe to amend the code? Because clearly, this is a, it seems like there should be a variance allowed with this or some sort of thing. I don't think it meets the burden, but we need to, I think we need to change that other part of it.
Yeah, it was the, he could have went in for a variance with the board of special appeals or through the Planning Commission, and if it had been attached to the house right now, he could have been approved. I think we could recommend changing that ordinance in the future, that it doesn't have to be a building connected to the house.
Yeah, you'd have, excuse me, the current language for home occupation requires that the occupation be done in the home and not alter the residential character of the home. In this case, Mr. Patterson is conducting his business, and he detached outbuilding on the property. So, it does not meet the requirements of the present language. If the board at some point directs that an amendment be done to change that language, then they would have to remove, in this case, the offensive language that says it has to be done in the home and look at allowing individuals to conduct occupations on their property in rural areas, either in the home or they detached outbuilding on the property.
Well, I think, I think right now is as good a time as ever to direct the planning staff to look into that type of ordinance and put something in front of us that we can review for adoption.
Yeah, I was just going to say, closing before I call a vote, I think the fact that Sarah Campbell, the attorney for the Planning Commission, I mean, the change in character was the fact that you had commercial properties that all of a sudden were being used. It wasn't the fact that there was a rezoning that had, that wasn't the change in the character of the areas, the fact that you had activity. And I think she pointed that out very strongly when we had the hearing two weeks ago. So, with that, we have a first and a second.
I'd like to say, one more discussion on the motion. And I do believe, and I've really struggled with this a lot, and unfortunately, I'm not an attorney, but I have to say that in my mind, this gentleman has occupied this property in its current use for many, many, many years, including before a rezoning of 1911 or, excuse me, 2011, whenever, or 2010, I can't remember. When was that, Eric?
The last comprehensive rezoning was in 2011. We all did that in 2011.
His operation existed prior to that. In my mind, we made a mistake. It wasn't our fault, but we made a mistake, because he should have been zoned something other than what he is today. And he didn't realize it, like many other property owners, that we were going through a comprehensive rezoning, because we don't give people notices and these types of problems develop. So, in my mind, there was a mistake made, that he should have been zoned something different back in 2011, and so I'm going to vote against the denial of his rezoning request. So, I'm going to vote opposed to the denial.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries 4 to 1.
I'd like Director Sunstrom to talk to that point that Commissioner Hodge just made, because we had that same incident in our Planning Commission last night. So, Director Sunstrom, if a parcel of land has been rezoned and the owner isn't aware of it, why in your mind is it not a mistake?
The, for this particular property, proper time to have made the argument that there was a mistake in the last comprehensive rezoning would have been in 1979.